The next delegation will take two-thirds. It's Lou DiVono Heroes Highway Ride and Rally. Members of council, I need-
Move it. One second.
Okay, we need two-thirds. Do you get to move it? One second. Okay.
Record a vote, please.
Record a vote. Called by councillor Wood.
Councillor Wood?
Yes.
Councillor Aker?
Yes.
Councillor Bellman is absent. Councillor Chapman?
Yes.
Councillor Diamond?
Yes.
Councillor England?
Yes.
Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Councillor Mairn-Piatri?
Yes.
Councillor Neil?
Yes.
Councillor Peter Beckey?
Yes.
Councillor Sanders?
Yes.
It's ten affirmative.
Okay. Come forward, Mr. DiVono. When you're ready, push the green button. You have, at five minutes, I'll stop you and then we'll see what happens.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. I'm going to be brief. I think the outrage that I feel has been expressed to council through a number of emails sent to the members of council from across the country. I'm going to share the mic with my co-director, Graham Hume, and mother of a fallen-
Wife.
Wife of a fallen soldier, as well as Trapper Kane, who is the national president of Cav. So I'm going to turn it over to my co-director, Graham Hume.
There's not really much point in me flogging a dead horse. I've beat it into the ground. Obviously, I'm not speaking the English that you're receiving, so I'd ask wife of Corporal Arnold, Carrie Arnold, to come up and maybe she could express what it means to the forces' members from C to C to C, exactly what this event impact on them is. Thank you.
Carrie?
Just start. Go ahead.
Karen, can you give us your last name?
Arnold.
Go ahead, please.
I'm here in support of Lou for the Highway Heroes Ride. I lost my husband in 2006. He was of a fallen hero. And to me, I did the ride last year for the first time, and the feeling that I got from it was unbelievable. There is no words. I cannot put words to it. The feeling that I got, watching the people on the bridges, people on the sides of the road, it's an amazing ride. And I think, I know I'll be doing it again this year. And yeah, the ride is amazing. I want to thank Lou. And I think everything should be waived for what he's being sued for. I think it's disgraceful. Our men, our women, our heroes, people in the armed forces that go to work every day. And I just think it should be wiped away.
Anything else?
All right.
Okay. I'd like to introduce Trapper Kane, National President of Cav Canadian Army Veterans Motorcycle Club.
Sir, could I get you, give us your name, please?
Trapper Kane C.D. That's a C-A-N-E-S-R.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
I'm a veteran. I served my nation proudly. I gave up the use of my body in injuries sustained in the line of duty. As a veteran, with all the different regimental associations that are out there, there's all sorts of different expressions of the veteran. Many veterans represent themselves in a great proud tradition with the blue Legion blazer, as in 1919, in 1946, 1954, and during the years with United Nations and NATO. As those people who retired from the military, they express themselves with the freedoms they earned in their own way. I choose to do it by motorcycle. I founded and am the national president of one of Canada's largest riding veterans charitable organizations. We're in 80 cities across Canada. We've influenced thousands and thousands and thousands of incredible events and raised millions of dollars for charity. Twelve times, I've physically ridden across Canada, from side to side, doing events like the HHR. The Heroes Highway Ride is a great high point of my trip. I was in this incredible community of Oshawa, that rainy rainy day that Lou brought together all the energy. And my role in the Army was I was Regimental Sniper Sergeant in the Princess Patricia's Canadian Light Infantry in the Canadian Airborne Regiment. My job was to be an observer. And it's my job, my role now, to identify heroes. And the heroes that we have here in Oshawa, we have Mr. Chapman, great, great military background. I understand, sir, your daughter is serving in uniform as well. Heroes are all around us. Right here in Oshawa, we have a great fellow, William Sam McGee, Silver Star, Bronze Star, courageous veteran, the first Special Service Force, the Devil's Brigade, good friend of mine, a great Oshawa son. His work with the Boys and Girls Club mirrors that of Mr. DiVono. The Heroes Highway Ride is unique. I've been at the head of hundreds of motorcycles in Newfoundland as we paid tribute to the fallen of Beaumont-Hommel, the horrors that happened at the Somme. Eight hundred men wiped out in just under 45 minutes. I've been in Rimini Unit, which is our Cav unit, Western Canada, as we paid tribute to families of the fallen out there. Twenty-one Silver Cross families together with thousands of motorcycles gathered together to make sure that we never forget their sacrifice. Here in Oshawa, we experienced an incredible event. Lou's Heroes Ride is an incredible event. And you helped make that happen in your own way. Now administratively, with the fees we're discussing, which are minimal in everyone's opinion, but high in today's economy and the way things go with funding, I'm here to ask you a favor. As the leader of Canada's great organizations that ride motorcycles, and there are many of them, the Cav, the Canadian Army Veterans, Veteran Army Canadian, in those 80 cities, we have had great influence. Sir?
Give me one second. Members of council, councillor England?
Motion to extend.
Seconded by councillor Diamond. Please continue.
Thank you. We've had great success across Canada with only Nova Scotia, which will be announcing in June, and PEI in Newfoundland to be announcing in August, extensions provincially of the Highway of Heroes. A hundred and fifty times, I've been on the Highway of Heroes as friends of mine, brothers and sisters of all of ours have come down that highway. With Mr. DiVono's ride, I carried last year Darlene Cushman, whose son Daryl was taken in Panjway by an IED. I've carried Sam McGee, one of the sons of Oshawa in my sidecar. I carry a sidecar because I gave up that leg, but it gave me the opportunity to carry these heroes and to interact with heroes like Mr. DiVono. In the Army, we had officers and senior NCOs who were incredible administrators and incredible citizens and heroes, just like you, the members of this council. The favor I ask of you is to help Lou navigate through this hurdle, to get past this funding issue, so that you can show Canada, the city of Oshawa, leading the way as it's always done, and Mr. DiVono with his Heroes Highway Ride, to extend the ride in every community across Canada willing to pay sacrifice and recognition of that sacrifice with funding issues and with motorcyclists and their loud pipes coming in communities and that horrible day. I mean, I wished I'd had scuba gear at one point there, but we came into Oshawa and the sun broke clear. I bought my lunch. I spent a lot of time in a local cafe. We watched Portraits of Honor, Dave's sofa with the images of those fallen heroes down by the armories. I got myself a hotel room, got myself dried off, had a great supper that night, great breakfast the next day, a tank of gas, and I carried on across Canada. All those motorcyclists that were brought by Mr. DiVono to your incredible community left not only their cash, but their hearts here in Oshawa. And they, and everybody gathered in this room, including yourselves, of course, want to see that type of energy carried on. So on behalf of Mr. DiVono's incredible Heroes Highway Ride and the energy that it brings to your community, you have an opportunity to show our nation how we can get through this funding issue and support him in moving forward, not only from the past, but into the future, so that our 80 cities of our Cav organization, with incredible people like we have here in this room, yourselves in particular in leadership role, to show the rest of the nation how we can carry on that energy. I thank you for your time, and Lou, I thank you for your energy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item one deals with the Highway of, the Heroes Highway Ride and Rally and the requesting of cancellation of the invoice for their event held in June 4, 2011, in the city of Oshawa. Item Corp. 1331. The recommendation here is that the correspondence Corp. 1331 dated February 25, 2013, from Lou DiVono, requesting cancellation of the invoice for the Highway of Heroes or the Heroes Highway Ride and Rally, event held on June 4, 2011, in the city of Oshawa, be referred to legal services. I have some questions with respect to this motion, Mr. Mayor, before I speak to it and ask a recorded vote. So I'll ask for a recorded vote, but I'd like to speak, sorry, ask some questions through you to staff, Mr. Mayor. We heard Mr. DiVono and a number of other delegations, and there's a great deal of support here this evening with respect to the matter, and the understanding, am I correct in understanding that the invoice that was provided, Mr. DiVono was just a lump sum and it was not itemized through you, Mr. Mayor, to staff?
Mr. Dignan, do you have any idea of what was on the invoice?
The invoice was dated June 30, and it indicated it was due now, in the amount of 54, 52, 41, and it was for items related to the Highway of Heroes event held on June the 4th. And that's the extent of the detail.
Okay, so we've got a lawsuit. Am I correct in understanding that we are seeking those costs from the Heroes Highway Ride and Rally in a lump sum and not itemized? Is that correct through you, Mr. Mayor?
The CAO has just said what was on the invoice, and I believe it's a small claims action.
Okay. Still, it's legal action, and my question through you, Mr. Mayor, to staff is can we have the items that we're charging the Heroes Highway Ride and Rally for?
Mr. Dignan, do you have a detailed breakdown or would there be one available to be sent to members of council at a later time?
No, tonight, like, we're deciding this tonight.
Thank you, your worship. It's based on the special events permit, and the special events permit was detailed. It listed, and this is predominantly road closures, rolling closure from Simcoe Street, exit 401 North to Drew Street, full closure of Simcoe Street from Bond to Colburn, full closure of Ontario Street from Richmond to Colburn, full closure of William Street from Prince to Ontario, and the full closure of Richmond Street East from Simcoe Street to Ontario Street. And those are the items that are related to the charges.
Nothing to do with garbage or signage, just road closures?
That's correct.
So there was no service performed aside from just closing roads?
There were a number of services provided, but as was indicated in the fact sheet that's been provided, the final invoice was reduced from over $6,000 to the $5,400, and that was in relationship to the work that was actually performed.
But the work that was performed was, as you said, dealing with road closures, but no waste receptacles or waste collection or anything of that nature?
I'm advised that there was a component for waste collection as well, although it's not identified on the given permit.
Who performed the waste collection?
It was our staff.
Are you sure about that?
My fact, I just confer with the solicitor for a moment. Yes, it was performed by our staff.
Was that disclosed to the staff? Because my investigation with respect to that was that our staff did not perform that service.
The information that has been collected and is in the solicitor's file is that yes, it was performed by our staff.
Which trucks and which employees performed it?
I can't, I can't respond to that. It's a little detail here.
Because my understanding, Mr. Mayor, my, Mr. Mayor, my understanding was and is that our staff did not perform it.
You can ask that, but to ask a question of what trucks and the actual individuals that worked that day is stretching it.
Valid, Mr. Mayor. It's valid. No, it's not. It's valid.
Because you'd have to prepare staff by asking the question in advance so they could get the information.
We have a legal proceeding on someone, and we don't have the answers to the questions? Prepare? I have to prepare staff?
Actually-
I mean, before we take legal action, so I'm not going to get into it because I don't want to speak to it. I'm just asking questions that I may or may not have the answers to already, but I was expecting a little different at this point, considering we're proceeding with a legal matter. I have a few more questions, Mr. Mayor.
Out of fairness, if that was a question you needed answered tonight, then you could have sent it ahead earlier today, but please continue.
Mr. Mayor, evidently, our staff did not know we performed waste collection until the solicitor advised. So in fairness, it goes both ways.
Well, actually, Mr. Dignan, Mr. Dignan was a participant that day. I saw him downtown along with other members of council on his bike.
Mr. Mayor, we're both at the same meeting. We're at the same meeting.
Actually, continue with your questions.
Thank you. So the costs that were reduced to 54 some odd thousand dollars, what were the other costs that were incurred? Any of them in cash?
Well, actually, our staff, it was Saturday, our staff that worked would have been paid outside of the normal limit. Some would have been on overtime. Yes.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just asking, I'm asking staff, the sum that was reduced, what did it account for? Was it overtime? Was it waste collection? Was it, what was it?
Mr. Dignan?
There's about $500 in equipment charges. The rest is staff time, basically overtime, and it was adjusted to provide a fair rationalization after we'd gone through all of the costs.
Okay. In fairness, through you, Mr. Mayor, could we get the folks that collected the waste that day and their hours, just to understand whether or not I'm correct or incorrect in this case? Whenever, obviously.
Whenever?
It's unfortunate we don't already have it, considering we're in small claims court with the organizers, but whenever would be good.
Mr. Dignan, would it be possible to pull out the worksheets for that day?
That information is all available, and it is summarized, and it is part of the court document, but we can provide it.
Specific to waste?
You just heard the CAO-
We can provide it for all of the costs.
Okay. So just to, you re-summarize here, we've got correspondence Corp. 1331 dated February 25th, but there was a lot of questions asked, and just want to ask through you, Mr. Mayor, to staff, at no other point was a motion moved to waive the fees for the organizers of the Heroes Highway Ride and Rally?
Well, actually-
Was this the first time?
I'm not aware of anything that's come to council other than the original motion that was on February 23rd, that the Heroes Highway Ride, and that's February 23rd of 2011, that was moved and seconded, that the Heroes Highway Ride and Rally be endorsed by the city conditional on all requirements and the approvals, and approvals being received, including not limited to the Durham Regional Police Services, and requests for in-kind services be denied, and that was February 23, 2011.
Okay. So Community Services Committee meeting, May 12, 2011, that the committee questioned the Director, Recreation and Culture, move by councillor Mairn-Piatri that pursuant to the correspondence CS 1177, received April 26, 2011, from Lou DiVono requesting to address the community service regarding the upcoming Highways of Heroes, so on and so forth, that the city of Oshawa continue to work with the organizers to assist in hosting the event, and two, that the fees be waived for the in-kind services to a maximum and subject to approval by the Finance and Administration Committee. That motion lost that committee, but that was another time that this matter was brought forward for relief of the Heroes and Highways Ride and Rally. Is that not true?
If you have that document, I just have my bundle in front of me, so.
Okay. So we've got a situation here this evening that I have to ask one more question on. How did the matter proceed to legal counsel? Obviously, we've got a recommendation here, but how did then legal counsel proceed to take the recommendation from the Corpus Services Committee, which was that Corpus, Correspondence Corp. 1331 dated February 25, 2013, from Lou DiVono requesting cancellation of the invoice for the Heroes Highway Ride and Rally event held on June 4, 2011, in the city of Oshawa? How did that, as a referral to legal, automatically trigger a suit in small claims court? Without counsel being able to deal with it?
Counselor, I believe that the action was taken before the letter came. Mr. Dignan, can you give us, or through you to legal, can we get kind of the order of how this kind of came forward?
Yes, Mr. Wakeford.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The matter was referred to legal services through finance as a debt, and it was processed as a, just as any debt collection matter would be, a claim was commenced in small claims. The recommendation which I believe the councillor is referring to speaks to the latest request simply being referred back to legal services. The standing direction to legal services is to pursue the debt. So long as the debt continues to exist, the direction to the solicitors is to pursue the debt.
Okay, so staff was just doing their job, and that's what I understand.
Yes.
But in this case, if I could just speak to this, Mr. Mayor, we have a situation where we heard from many councillors, councillors yourself included, how important, and full disclosure, I don't have any military background. I'm a son of two immigrants who came to Canada, and neither of which have a military background. And I'm sure that we all support the troops and hopefully veterans and unconditionally as Canadians. There's no question there, none. Your daughter is in the armed forces. Councillor Chapman is involved in the forces. Councillor Neil's father went to war in World War II. Everyone's got an appreciation and respect, immense respect, for the armed forces, veterans and the troops, including those who serve outside of the forces, because there are a lot of volunteers involved with this and their families. So that's not in question. Definitely not in question, I would hope. The issue here is, and I'm going to speak just personally, is that when staff is making a decision and just carrying forward in their work, it's respected as them just doing their job. But there's a sensitivity here. We have not only the fact that we're dealing with troops and veterans, but in a city like Oshawa that's got such a rich heritage that's associated with those individuals who fought to give us what we have and the opportunity that I have to serve on this council, we don't have the ability to have the heads up, to come back to council and say, listen, there's an issue here. There's a group that may or may not have been understood properly, and there's an outstanding amount. What would you guys like to do with it? Because the group came forward to us at a number of different occasions, including councillors coming forward at the committee level and offering to waive fees. The last motion was made on May 12, 2011. Since then, we thought things were being dealt with in a way that was respectful, and I think that's the key, dealing with things respectfully. And I think tonight, there's going to be a reversal of the opinions of some on council, I would hope, after recognizing just how much of a nightmare this has become in terms of public relations for the city of Oshawa across the country and probably across the world. If you Google Oshawa, and you would see in any case that we're suing anyone that's organizing on behalf of veterans or troops, I mean, it's just common sense, guys. Whether the bill was 19,000 or 5,000 or $500, you just don't do it. Like no one else did it. We shouldn't have done it, and I think tonight we have the opportunity to do what on May 12, 2011, I had moved with no ulterior motive. I don't have family in the military, and I don't have any sort of affinity to bikes. I'm scared to death about motorcycles, full disclosure. I don't ride, but I think it's probably the right thing to do. And just to wrap up, Mr. Mayor, you know, when I go forward and I investigate issues, you know, and I get back information that's not entirely true, and I'll say not entirely true because I don't want to say another word, because it's not fair to anyone to say anything else, because there are obviously mistakes that are made, I feel that I'm made a fool of, and I'm offended. And I don't think people realize what we're around the table here for. I'm not here for me. It's not my name that, like, we're here to represent people, and I think the residents of Oshawa expect that each councillor, irrespective of their name or their background or what their affinity or whatever the case may be to a group, is respected, because those individuals who voted for us expect that. Anything less would be not an offense to me or to the group that we're trying to fight for tonight, but it'd be an offense to the residents of the city of Oshawa. Because if you ask them or our staff members that if they wanted to volunteer or wanted us to pay for this, you know, event to happen coming through the city of Oshawa, they would say yes. It would be a no-brainer. I haven't, I went to the Oshawa Generals game last night, and I had people asking me what was wrong with us. And they weren't saying it because we were, you know, out of our, they were asking, like, you know, what is wrong with you? Do you not understand just how important this stuff is? It's just a no-brainer. It's common sense. Now, Mr. Mayor, if you take, just one final point, if you take a look at the legal costs incurred, the costs to the city of Oshawa with respect to the negative public relations, and you wrap that up and you equate it in comparisons to the 56 or the $5,400 outstanding, holy smokes, we're in debt. A lot more so than by just simply waiving that $5,400. So tonight, we're going to waive it. I know it's going to happen, but it shouldn't have got to this. And it shouldn't get to every single time we get to a major issue that we have to buckle at the last minute and then say, well, you know, things changed. I think we should start considering the opinions of certain councillors-
Counselor, you're over your limits, so.
Yeah, that have actually the judgment in essence of the community to actually make the right decision in the first place. And that decision would have been to respect this event in full, as the media has said, including the local media, who at times is even critical of me, but I'm glad to hear that they agreed tonight to what we hoped they were going to do. We have to blame the process of information. There are many, many times, I don't, like, we, everyone's been thanked except for Lou. And I think we should start thanking volunteers and people like Lou who don't have a military background that get involved in stuff like this to help vets and to help troops. So I want to thank Lou, and I thank all the residents of Oshawa. And although I'm not one of the councillors who, you know, voted to go and proceed with legal action against Lou and the organizers and the event, I still think we should all say sorry.
I understand, but it was simply the letter. The action in small claims court started before the last council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, tonight, I heard that never did Lou ask us for anything, and we heard differently. We have documents to suggest that he asked for us $19,000 on the basis of what Autofest had asked. So the misconception that all of a sudden this has come out of nowhere is wrong. It's wrong. And let me speak, Mr. Mayor, because-
We were wrong, yeah, that's right.
I heard on another matter in a previous term, we were asleep at the switch. Sleep at the switch. And I think this is another matter where we're trying to backpedal and say, the information wasn't there. Nobody was asleep at the switch, and the information was there. It's just that some of us chose to vote one way and others chose to vote the other way. And I will not take upon myself the negative aspect of what this PR has gathered for the city of Oshawa, because residents, if you ask the residents of the city of Oshawa what they wanted to do with respect to this issue, they would have told you that some of us who wanted to move forward and waive the fees were right. Just vote with them. And that was done many times. And I think if you want to talk about media and publicity and what the media got us, I'll tell you what not having the Toronto and the local media involved got us. It got us recommendation that Correspondence 1331 be referred to legal services, and I'll tell you, that's where it would have ended. And Mr. DiVono and the Heroes Highways Ride and Rally would have been out $5,400 plus, and nobody would have known about it. and nobody would have known about it, except for everyone that's involved in this event, and so on and so forth. And eventually, people would have said, I can't believe what you guys did. So I thank the media, who at times are critical of me, but it's not about me, and it's not about any one of us. This is about an event. And I think at times we have to look past what the event is about and what the event's not about, and just look at what the community wants. And in this case, I think it's pretty clear that from the beginning, we want to talk about passion, the community wanted us to have an event of this nature and continue to have this event of this nature come through the city of Oshawa. And if we look at Lou and we just say simply, I'm sorry and thank you, and we look forward to having you back, that's where it all begins and that's where it all ends. But that wouldn't happen without the media, and that's a shame.
Any other member of council? Okay, so what we're doing now is, before we do this, I just wanted to give you a couple comments. You know, there's been some errors done all over the place. Staff didn't do anything wrong. Their job is to process documents the way they normally do. You know, as a parent of, and I normally never speak from the chair, this will be the first, as a parent of someone who sees the best of the best every time he's in Kingston with the young men, women of this country, I am truly impressed. By everything that goes through in the Highway of Heroes and the rides, I truly impressed. And I'll defend your right to be here tonight and say what you want to say, but what troubles me is the threats that came to members of council. Some of us have been threatened. Some of us have been threatened over the phone. Some of us have received very nasty emails. Now, I will defend your right to send that email, but I have to tell you that I'm troubled by that, too. And I thank today that if an invoice had been opened a few years, two years ago, in all fairness, we might not have gotten here. But anyways, I'm going to call the vote right now so you folks can leave, and we can get on with the rest of our meeting. So I need two-thirds because it's a reconsideration. All those in favor, actually, a recorded vote was called by councillor Marion Pietri.
Councillor Marion Pietri?
Reconsideration, yes.
Councillor Neil?
Yes.
Councillor Peter Beckey?
Yes.
Councillor Sanders?
Yes.
Councillor Wood?
Reconsider, yes.
Councillor Aker?
Yes.
Councillor Chapman?
Yes.
Councillor Diamond?
Yes.
Councillor England?
Yes.
Mayor Henry?
Yes.
It's 10 affirmative.
So that carries. So the reconsideration is...
And it's waived.
So your fees, just so you know, you can go out and get wet, it's carried, so the fees have been waived. Normally, Mr. DeVono, if you push the green button, normally this would not be allowed.
Sorry, sorry, John, was that on the amendment or on the whole issue? Okay, the whole thing's done, thanks.
Your worship and council, thank you very much. I appreciate your support. Let me be true to my word. I said that if council zeroed this bill, I would consider bringing the event back. I've been told by my co-director that 2016 represents the regimental birthday. We'd like to bring it back for 2016, of course. In-kind would be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I hope you don't get too wet. We're going to give you a second to clear the room, and then we'll continue with the rest of the agenda.